Good evening, everyone. We welcome you tonight, and we welcome all those at home. We will get started with our Board of Commissioners regular meeting at October 17th, 2024, at 7:05 PM. Ms. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
I'm number three. Prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler.
Lord, in the meeting today, as matters of business, that our hearts and our minds is a spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm number four. It's Mayor's Comments. I want to welcome everyone here tonight, welcome everyone at home, and just make sure everybody talks loudly into the mic so that our group here can hear and also those at home. We will have citizens' comments after our approval of the agenda. It will be limited to three minutes. Detective Dutton will be the one keeping the time, and he will let us know when the three minutes is up. I know that we have a lot of people here who are interested in a lot of different things, and let's just be respectful of everyone tonight. Thank you. I'm number five. It's approval of the agenda.
Ooh, for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item five passes 5-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
Yes, Mayor. The first tonight is Clifford Brunger.
Please state your name and address, and if you live in the city or the county.
My name is Clifford Brunger. My property is 7510 Crowcut Road. A portion of my property borders Bowie Park. I have sent an email documenting my concerns regarding the proposed use of the Bowie Park land as an outdoor shooting range to all the county commissioners, as well as the city manager and the mayor. I have a copy of that email here if anyone wants to read it, and would like to add it to the minute meetings. Fairview Police Department has proposed building a police training facility that contains an outdoor shooting range on map 43 parcel 44, a property commonly referred to as the Out parcel. The property in question, however, was given to the City of Fairview by Dr. Bowie in 1988 as part of a 700-plus acre of land for Bowie Park. By accepting this land, the City of Fairview agreed to utilize the real estate in accordance with expressed preferences of the grantor that's documented in the deed. That's a quote. As everyone knows, her expressed wishes were to use this land as a wildlife preserve. Most of her 700 acres were placed in a land trust in 2008. However, according to the city commissioners' minute meetings, on 19 March 2015, the Out parcel was excluded from the conservation because, quote, "from the minutes." "The acidity of the leaves and decomposing remains of roadkill makes it unsafe for human occupancy, and because of the use of this land for this purpose over a period of years is likely to be uninhabitable by humans based on a study performed by the Kansas State University." Commissioner Bissell stated at that time that the property has been used for many things in the past and was personally left out of the land trust agreement for that reason. The contamination of the property has been documented in multiple commissioners' meeting minutes. There's also recommendations in the minutes for Fairview to clean up the site, but to this date, it has not been done. My mother, who passed away a couple of years ago, as well as my aunt and cousins, have called multiple times in the past regarding the rotting flesh smell and the gunshots. You can check the police records to verify her calls. Although Dr. Bowie stated that some of the land could be used for construction of public buildings, the proposed shooting site is not expected to be made available to the public. Additionally, I do not believe that anyone would believe that an outdoor shooting range would be in accordance with Mr. Dr. Bowie's expressed wishes. Finally, the property was given to the city with the following caveat. In the event the City of Fairview no longer desires to maintain a portion of the real estate as a wildlife sanctuary, public park, the said title of the real estate shall vest in Williamson County. In closing, I believe that billing an outdoor shooting range on the Bowie Park Out parcel is a direct violation of Mr. Bowie's wishes, and as well a violation of the legal agreement that the City of Fairview signed when they accepted her gift. I believe that the Out parcel needs to be cleaned up, restored to its original condition, and put back in the land trust. I believe that the city starts construction on a shooting range on the property, they will be subjecting the city to legal action. Furthermore, after reviewing the city commissioners' meeting minutes, I believe that the selection of the Out parcel for the shooting range was arbitrary and capricious, and thus the city commissioners, as well as the mayor, could be held liable for any damage of a lawsuit were to occur. Finally, if anyone gets injured by a stray bullet, the city will be liable for damages that could bankrupt the city. Some say the chances may be small, but regardless, the consequences are huge. Is this a risk you want to take for the taxpayers of Fairview?
Next, we have Erin DeBose.
Okay. Can you hear me okay? My name is Erin DeBose. I live at 7075 Dice Lampley Road. I'm in the county. My driveway is next to this property in question. I want to preface what I'm saying, that I have respect for law enforcement. I do. My 27-year-old passed away September 24th in a car accident in Dixon, and Highway Patrol come out. Beautiful souls. And so I have respect. So I appreciate the words that the city is focusing on, which is approved and funded project. You put an article in The Observer in 2021, when COVID was wiping out many lives in the world, about the range. The neighbor and residents to this property live outside the city limits in the country. Not a word, not a phone call, not a letter, not a peep was spoken to us, not anything like that. But you put up a sign, you send certified letters, when you're wanting an ordinance variance for a 50-foot tower instead of 35. This should have been done in 2021. This should have been done. It is just questionable. We should have been notified. So my reason for speaking today is I want to know why are we here? Why is this even being discussed? This was proposed and defeated in 2006, 2007. It was defeated. It was killed. You tried to put the gun range then. It was defeated because you had no right to put a gun range on that annexed property. It is a part of the park. It's annexed. That's the verbiage for that piece of property. That means in addition to the park, not like the other pieces of property. It was voted down. It was killed. Why are we, why was this even brought back up in 2021? Why was it? Because you left it out of the land trust in 2008? That seems calculated. That seems suspicious and unethical. That this property was left out when we already voted this down and defeated it. So for this to even be discussed is preposterous. This property was donated for the flora and the animals to be protected. Since it was defeated previously, you've dumped trash, you've dumped carcasses where there's been buzzards. I mean, I live next to it. I smell it. You know, I love how Facebook people put on there all about this land. I live next to it. I know what's going on. I'm frustrated with you. You have zero rights to put a gun range on this land. I want somebody to explain why it was even brought up in 2021, and you put it in The Observer. Again, we were not reached. Another thing, Google property value around gun ranges, they plummet. They plummet. We pay taxes. This isn't a cheap area. You know that. We pay taxes. All right. Anyways, it's immoral. I think you're immoral.
Next, we have Mike Cruz.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mike Cruz. I live at 7470 Crowcut Road. First off the bat, I want to say that I think that law enforcement officials are entitled to all the training they can get. They need it. They put their lives on the line. That being said, it's not right to shove something down people's throats there, like try to sneak something in without letting the surrounding property owners know, which was done. It really was. We are a small community. I may be wrong, but I think I read it was like 16.8 square miles. We are not Nashville. We are not, you know, Columbine or whatever. We are a small community. There is training facilities, plenty of them available, for our law enforcement officials without spending taxpayer money. I think Williams County is just putting in a new, very state-of-the-art one there that they could use. There's one in Dixon County. Why should that money be spent on something that's unnecessary? We have things in our community that really needs addressing, potholes, traffic lights, things like that. Not that our law enforcement officials don't deserve training and everything. They do. But let's use the facilities that are already there. You know, they really are. Let's spend the taxpayers' money wisely, very wisely. We've got these facilities. Let's please use them. There was a comment made, I hate to say this, but the chief police said, I was going to say too, that they would be, Fairview City would be the one to call if there's an incident in my house. Going by Fairview's record, I hope they never come to my house because usually the homeowners or developments wind up dead. So, you know, please call the county, you know, if they have to come to my house. But please, use our money wisely. Listen to the people, what the people want, what the people. After all, you know, we're nothing without the people. Like, if you have a business, the customers are all you've got. You know, your taxpayers are all you've got there. And even though I live in the county, I'm a taxpayer. You buy a piece of bubble gum, you're a taxpayer for the City of Fairview. You really are. So please, listen to the people, do what the people want, not the few, what the majority want. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Jackson Brunger.
My name is Jackson Brunger. I own the property at 7501 Dice Lampley Road, and I live in the county. And just thinking, what was we going to talk about tonight? I go, all right, let's talk about the rifle range. All right. So what I hear most of when I talk to people is that this is a done deal. This is a done deal. This is not, if, this is not a done deal. I mean, I hear it from you guys, this decision was already made by previous administration. You can change this. This is not a done deal. This is bad for Fairview. We went, I came here every day for a Coda Palooza that you guys put on, which I liked it. It was fun. I enjoyed it exhausting, but it was fun. Because you all agree that the current codes that other administrations made were not sufficient for the City of Fairview. They're putting, you're putting, the previous administrations want to put a high-density housing. Everyone's close together, all kinds of things that need to be changed. This is one of the things that needs to be changed. I have maps. Mayor, I didn't get you a map. I'm sorry. You got here late. But I have your map. I was passing other people.
I wasn't late.
I have a mayor. I have a mayor.
I wasn't late.
I have a map for you. But if you look at the maps I gave you guys, the City of Fairview is growing. The property is here. The City of Fairview is going all the way around. I predict in 10 to 15 years, the city will completely, city limits will completely enclose Bowie Park. And right in the middle, currently, you have plans to put a gun range. Every city that has a gun range inside it is trying to get it. Citizens of Franklin has a gun range in his city limits. If you talk to anyone who lives on West End Circle, Lula Lane, Lula Lane has an incident where a ricochet landed in one of the guy's yard. Talk to the sheriff. He'll tell you that. Talk to the detectives that work there. They'll tell you that. Ricochets are rare and don't happen very often. And I was talking to Commissioner McDonald. Yeah, it's very rare. This could happen, but ricochets happen. But my issue is mainly the noise. You're putting a gun range right next to the gym. I mean, this is the diamond of any city in the state, in the country, in the world would like. This park, 700-acre park, it's a beautiful park. Why put a gun range there? You'll be able to hear it everywhere. I respect the chief. I have nothing against the chief. He's right. I have no experience in law enforcement, none, except for I served in the military. That's all I have. I've been to lots of ranges. You looked at ranges, you look at the speakers when I was in the Army, you look at the speakers in the range, there's holes in them because of their training. These people are green. If this thing opens up the first day out there, will you be willing to stand on the berm of this gun range with your children beside you while the greatest officer you have is practicing shooting, and then the first round goes like this, and it messes up, and its pistol goes like that? Will you be willing to stand there on top of that berm and stop that? This is wrong for the city. This is absolutely wrong for the city. If you look at the, I'll show you the maps later. He's going to tell me to stop. I know. But just look at where the city is going, and you can change. You're the administration in charge. You can go back. You can have another meeting for this, and you can change the city to make it, what do we say, change the character of the city. Thank you, sir.
Gina Brunger.
Hi. My name is Gina Brunger. We have property at 7501 Dice Lampley. Currently, a police training facility, aka gun range, is being planned at 7041 Dice Lampley, approximately 25 acres of Bowie Park known as the Out parcel. For at least 37 years, the City of Fairview has failed to follow Ms. Bowie's stipulations pertaining to the Bowie Park Out parcel, and as such, has violated the terms and conditions recorded in the deed in which the City of Fairview was to preserve the real estate herein as a wildlife preserve and/or park. The city has had numerous discussions in their minutes regarding the Out parcel. One of them was in March 19th, 2015. Commissioner Bissell stated, "We should rethink the decision to designate the Out parcel as an impound lot or training facility." The Kansas State University study found that it was likely to be uninhabitable by humans and unsafe for human occupancy from the acidity, from the leaves, and the decomposing remains of roadkill. There are, my husband would take you out there on the side-by-side, but there's some places that are 20 feet high that's got all kinds of trash. Anyway, Fairview has continued to use the land as a dumping ground, an informal, non-approved gun range for police, as well as a storage facility, which all are inconsistent with Ms. Bowie's documented deed stipulations. Opinions from people as to what she wanted are irrelevant as they are documented in the property deeds and her will. Ms. Bowie's deed and will gave these instructions. "In the event the City of Fairview no longer desires to maintain a portion of the real estate herein as a wildlife sanctuary and/or public park, subject to the terms and conditions herein, the title to sell, to sell said real estate shall then vest in Williamson County, Tennessee. Based upon the City of Fairview's historical failure in managing the Out parcel in accordance with the direction provided by Ms. Bowie, the time may come to invoke the deed's language and transfer the Out parcel and possibly the entire Bowie Park to Williamson County. I want all police to be trained. Franklin is building a multimillion-dollar facility. Why can't we use that?" Ms. Bowie donated in 1988 794 acres, and she did it, deeded it to the City of Fairview. 722 acres in 2008 was put into a land trust, of which 681... I had one more sentence.
Last, we have Mary Brody.
Hello. Mary Brody, 7510 Crowcut Road, own property there. Just a couple of things to add. Just my background is in training. I helped train the police. I helped train nuclear power workers, and part of our training was, guess what, on a shooting range. And during that time, I experienced two ricocheted bullets that almost took my life. So I can tell you, and we had all kinds of safety procedures. There is no safer place than a nuclear power plant, and accidents happen. So that's the second time I've heard it. So it's not as rare as what you think. But that's not really the big point. I believe we should train the police, and I'm all for it, but I just don't believe. And also, I worked for the government in contracts. I was the gatekeeper of the government's money and did multimillion-dollar contracts. And I don't believe that $3 million for the size of this city is a well-invested money for the size of this city. There could be other things done with that money. There could be libraries, school improvements, an aquatic center for the children, many, many things besides a gun range for 30 to 35 people. It just doesn't seem like well-spent money. Thank you.
I'm number seven. Public announcements, awards and recognition, city events.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. We do have a trunk-or-treat Saturday, and I can't remember the exact times when it starts, but I do know they're having a, you can check on the website. They are having a movie after the trunk-or-treat.
Trunk-or-treat is 4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00, and then after trunk-or-treat is going to be a movie, and it's going to be Casper, the friendly ghost. I guess, let me go ahead and announce the blood drive, too. It'll be up here at City Hall. It's going to be in a mobile blood drive. It's November 8th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Thank you.
I'm number eight. Staff comments and monthly reports. A, community services report. Mr. Career.
Good evening, Board. Our Public Works Department has been out patching potholes, replacing signs, and they have completed the right-of-way mowing for the 2024 season. Chipper service will conclude for the 24 calendar year on October 22nd. Zone 4 will be the last pickup next Tuesday on October 22nd. Beginning in November, the Public Works Department will start leaf pickup. Each pickup will be limited to 10 leaf bags. Bags are available for free to citizens of Fairview. You may pick up leaf bags at the Community Services Building located at 7111 Bowie Lake Road, right next to the Fire Department. Leaf pickup will follow the Public Works zone schedule. For more information about what can be included in your leaf bag, please visit the Public Works Department page on the City of Fairview website. For the Planning and Codes Department, for the month of September, our department issued 20 residential building permits. Our Codes Department completed 276 building inspections. Currently, we have seven applications under review for planning commission consideration at the November 12th Planning Commission meeting. And then during September, we hosted Coda Palooza with our consultant TPUDC for our new development code. Coda Palooza was a week-long event between September 23rd and September 26th. During that, we hosted open meetings for the public to provide input on what they would like to see new development look like in the future of Fairview. We are expecting to receive a client draft of the new development code by the end of 2024. We'll review that in-house, send their, send any revisions back to TPUDC, and then they will, their next step after that is to provide a public draft so that the public can provide input at that point again. For more information on the new development code, you can find recordings of all of the previous meetings and provide input on the process on zonefarview.com. That completes my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? I don't want to put you on the spot, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask this, and if you have the information. But if not, we'll do it at the next meeting. Just going over the sign permits.
Sure.
There's been a lot on Facebook and questions, so I just kind of wanted to run down that real quick if we could.
Give me just one second. Permits are required anytime that you want to post a sign in the city that's not on your own property. Most of the signs that we've been issuing permits for are garage and yard sale sign permits. Those fall under our temporary sign permit. It is for a garage yard sale sign. Those are a $20 permit, and applicant receives three yard sale signs that can be posted along Highway 96 or Highway 100, Fairview Boulevard. They are also allowed and able to post signs that they make on their property or in neighbors' property that they have, as long as they have consent of the owner.
Is there anywhere those signs, I'm going to be specific, those yard sale signs cannot be placed?
Yes. There are a few places. Let me get back to that section of the code, so I'm not...
I just really want this for the record because I've had so many questions. I feel like if it's for the record, then, or on the record, then everybody would be clear.
Sign placement restrictions. No signs shall be allowed in the public right-of-way. The sign setback, the sign setback line shall be 25 feet from the center line of the road on state highways, where the right-of-way is unknown, and 10 feet from the edge of pavement on city roads. No sign shall be placed on any utility pole, street or traffic sign, tree, fence, et cetera. One of the largest pieces that we see, and it's a wonderful place to put signs, is the fence. If you're sitting at the Walmart parking, traffic light, the fence that's right across from that. TDOT actually has asked us to make sure that we keep that fence clean and remove all signs that are posted on that. There are, that is within TDOT's right-of-way. That's their property. And so they've asked us as a city to help enforce that restriction on placing signs within the public right-of-way.
And when are the signs able to be placed, and when do they have to be removed?
That one gets a little more complicated. It depends on what type of sign permit it is.
Yard sale.
For yard sale signs, they can be placed, let me pull up the exact code so we're not... They can be placed two days prior to the yard sale, and then it has to be picked up 24 hours after the yard sale.
So I would assume the date is on the sign so that our codes enforcer can...
Yes, the dates are on the sign most of the time.
Next, real estate signs?
Real estate signs is, as far as directional real estate signs that we see throughout the weekend, most of the time, is that what you're speaking of?
Yes.
So those fall into a different category. Those can be placed between Friday at 1:00 PM, and they have to be collected by Monday at 1:00 PM. And those directional real estate signs, we often see them. They're on a lot of corners that get put up for new developments that are off of Highway 100 with open house here, new subdivision coming in down this road, those similar type signs. And those are allowed to be placed typically on the weekends. They're exclusively on the weekends per our code. If we see those that are out during the week, our codes enforcement inspector goes out. If we see those that are out during the week, our codes enforcement inspector goes out as he makes his rounds through town, picks those up. If anyone would like to come collect them, y'all are more than welcome to come to the office. We are keeping signs for 14 days. If, if, if people would like to come collect any signs, you're more than welcome to.
And the office is the Tan, Tan Building on Bowie Lake Road, just near the Fire Department, if anybody doesn't know where that's at. Is there any place that real estate signs cannot be placed?
They have the same restrictions as far as within the, within the right-of-way, on a fence, post. They're supposed to be outside of 25 feet from center line on highways, and 10 feet of center line from, or 10 feet from the edge of pavement on city roads.
And if someone's selling their house, if they have a sign for sale in their yard for their house, that's not restricted?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And then, one of the big questions I've had is people think that they have to pay the $50 fee if they're putting a political sign in their yard. But I've tried to explain that that's not per yard. That's the, the person running for the office pays the $50 fee and can hand out their signs. Correct me if I'm wrong, and they can be put in yards of people who give permission?
That's correct. For political signs, there is only one fee paid for all political signs. Each candidate pays one $50 fee to be able to post signs within the city municipal boundary.
And, and does it follow the same rules as the yard sale and the real estate signs as far as where they can be placed?
Yes, those follow the same rules.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
That fee for political signs, I believe, is non-refundable now?
I don't know if it was ever refundable previously, but it is not a refundable fee.
It was previously, but I'm sure that got changed, and so I just wanted to clarify that. The real estate signs, of course, the entrance that I'm more concerned about is the Cumberland and 100. And sometimes the one sign is awful close to the edge of the pavement. It may be within the 25 foot of the center line, but could you have your guy check that area there? Because it, it's kinda hard to see to get out when they're coming up out of that little swell down in the bottom down there.
Yes, sir. We can have that checked.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item 8B, Police Department Report. Is that Detective Reed?
Cool.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. For August, staffing has remained the same, 31, 31 in September. Overtime in August was zero. September, it was at 68.5, and our training hours have remained relatively the same. The training for August, we had basic police school, in-service, FBI command leadership, that's a leadership training class, FBI National Academy Conference, very similar, drug interdiction, tactical officers conference, and then we had the new higher training. Training for September, we had in-service, basic police school, internal affairs, and search and rescue. Calls for service, we have, for September, it was 1,091, and for August, it was 1,075. Our arrests for August were at 72. Slight fluctuations in September at 63. Domestics was one. Two in September. DUI for August was five. September is one, our drug charges, 29 for August, 16 for September. We had two thefts in August and zero in September. Citations were at 117 for September, and in August, it was 129. Traffic accidents are down for September, whereas they were at 26 in August. Property damage is also down in September. Injury, we had three in September, and in August, there were two. Zero fatalities for both. For Nature Fest, we earned $1,585 for shop with a cop, which is excellent. And we want to congratulate Officer Charlie Hoffman and Micah Phan, because they have graduated the police academy.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
I am number eight. C is Fire Department Report. Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is the report for September for the Fire Department. We responded to 138 emergency calls in September. Significant events, we had 29 overlapping incidents. Again, that's where one crew is out when another call comes in before they're back in service. We had three incidents where a fire was extinguished. We have one RV fire in the city, one dwelling fire, and one large field fire in the county that we assisted on. We had one person removed from a vehicle using hydraulic tools, and we had 20 mutual or automatic aid responses in surrounding jurisdictions. Our average response time was up a little bit for this month. We had some calls that were way out in the county, and then we responded to a significant call out towards Chatham County line for us. So that number's gonna, and then when we have fires, our average time on scene is gonna go up also. Again, to report an emergency, call 911 first. Don't report it to Facebook. We don't monitor that all the time. We had someone put something on there, and we saw it 30 minutes later. So just call 911. Don't call the station. We may be out on another call, and we wouldn't get that call. Next slide. September call breakdown, it's gonna follow suit as it mostly does. We're running over 75% medical calls is kind of the norm, and then the fires and rescue calls are kinda mixed in there. Those are just some pictures of some of the events that we had in September. Next slide. Heat map, again, is gonna continue to, to look the same. As you can see, by the interstate's getting, we're getting a lot of calls. That big red dot out there is getting darker as the months go along, and then the other areas that we respond to a lot are getting that. And these, these just plot the number of calls we have in a certain area. Again, some of the calls that we responded to in September are pictured to the side. Fire prevention activities, this is our fire marshal and the prevention group. So we had 22 fire and life safety inspections. These are in businesses that we're required to inspect every year. Again, only a few minor corrective action notices have been issued. Everybody's been compliant and with anything that they're deficient on and gets that taken care of before it comes to visit. We had 17 plan reviews. We had 25 pre-fire plans. We participated in Career Day at Westwood School, and those are some of the pictures from it. And again, if any city residents need smoke alarms installed in their house, just call the station. The fire marshal will set up a time, he'll come out and get those installed for you. September training, we had 510 hours as a department. This is some of the training. We did some RIT training, RIT under fire also. So we had live fire and RIT training going on at the same time. That's basically just how we rescue a firefighter if they happen to go down in a fire, but that was one of the training scenarios. That's us using the tower and then some of the other training that we had. Also in September, we wanted to recognize Captain Kyle Jones for 20 years of service with the Fire Department. Captain Jones and his engineer also delivered a baby girl on a call, and they were awarded the Stork pin for their uniforms, for their Class A uniforms. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8D, Finance Report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. As usual, I've provided three reports for you guys. The first one is your Board of Commissioners' expenditure report, and the second report is a summary financial statement, which gives revenue detail, which we're, we're ahead of schedule on. I've been, I've been encouraged by revenues so far this year, and, and it gives the expenditure summary. And then your last report is the balances of our banks, bank accounts and, and investment accounts as of September 30, 2024. Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? Item E, City Manager Report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you. I just have a few announcements. If you get to looking for me next week, I will be at the Tennessee City Manager Association's Conference, Fall Conference, next week. And also wanted to remind everyone that Town Hall will be on the 29th. I want that to be on a Tuesday. And then I believe we only have one meeting for November, and that's on the 7th. Just want, and then also, if you come in, the auditors are gonna come out, come out for another week, the week of the 28th. And also, early voting started this week. Just want to encourage everyone to, to get out and, and exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Consent Agenda. A, Minutes from October 3rd, 2024, Board of Commissioner, regular meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item nine, passes 5-0. Item number 10, Old Business. There is no old business tonight. Item 11, New Business. A, Resolution 43-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for Columbus Cove. Mr. Greer?
The site development agreement before you lists the site reclamation bond as $125,663. The one that is included in your packet has the development company listed as SM Commercial. It was brought to our city engineers' attention that SM Commercial is the incorrect LLC. It is Platinum Equities LLC is the correct LLC to be there, listed as the developer. Mr. Mangram is representative of that LLC and is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. This development agreement is a standard document that has been reviewed by our city attorney, and it is also signed by Mr. Mangram as representative of Platinum Equities LLC.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions of Mr. Mangram? If he's in the back of the room, if we need him to come forward, he can. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11A, passes 5-0. Item 11B, Resolution 44-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for Agnep? Is that how you say it? Okay. Expansion. Mr. Greer?
Tonight, for Resolution 44-24, our office has yet to receive a signed site development agreement from the developer, and so we are asking for a deferral of Resolution 44-24 to the November 7th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I mean, sorry.
Commissioner Johnson?
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11B, passes 5-0.
Deferred.
Item number 12, Round Table. Mayors and Commissioner. Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would like to speak to the, the county residents that came tonight and share their concerns with the, the firing range. I don't know where people are getting some of the antics, saying that it was left out, it was added back in, it was taken out again. None of that ever happened. That property was never included in the original conveyance going into the Land Trust of Tennessee. That it was completely, completely left out always. So any, anybody that says any different is incorrect, and they're just spreading rumors. I will say that it's just like a subdivision. No matter where we chose to put the firing range, the group that lives next to it is not gonna want it. The five of y'all that spoke tonight, or the five property owners that live there, if it chose to go somewhere down next to 840, the exact same thing is gonna happen, and a new group of people is gonna say they don't want it. And I completely understand, and I'm not saying that I would want it next to me either. But I will say this. City residents cannot just go out and willy-nilly shoot rounds from firearms on their property. But each of y'all that spoke tonight can go on your property and shoot away, and there's nothing that the city can do about it. There's nothing that the city could do about each and every one of you going and opening your own private shooting range that's right next to the park. There's nothing, so I just want everybody to get the big picture and realize that, I didn't even realize this... didn't even realize this until tonight, until the chief said it, not one city resident has come to that podium and spoke against this shooting range. And for a group of people to come up and say that this group might be going against the wishes of the taxpayers, that can't, that can't happen.
It's in our backyard. It's not in theirs.
I understand exactly how you feel. But not one city resident has come up here and been against this. And I don't know, at the next meeting, we might be inundated with them. But I just, I just can't see how this is a bad thing. If it was unsafe, I would believe everything that y'all are saying. But if it's built to the standards that have been put forth, I just can't imagine it being a bad thing. Can accidents happen? Absolutely. Accidents could happen. Each and every one of y'all could have somebody hunting on your property, and there'd be an accident. Nobody wants that. But I just think that this board has to make tough decisions. And whether it's about a subdivision that's coming in, or a commercial piece of property, or this shooting range, I'm really not even sure how this, many of y'all spoke about that tonight. I don't even know how it got to where we were even discussing it tonight, other than we had a workshop where the chief was gonna enlighten us, because this whole board hadn't even been part of that process. I wasn't even here then, and I've been here a long time. But I just think that everybody needs to take the opportunity to sit back, and, Mr. Brungger, you might be right, maybe it can be changed. I don't know whether it needs to be changed. I have no problem looking at it. But I will say that we need training, whether it's the Fire Department, the Police Department, or anything. And if going to another city to make that happen is not what they think is in the best interest of our city, then I think we need to listen to them, because they're the, they're the paid staff. I don't think that we, I'm not even sure where the $3 million figure came from, that this facility was gonna cost $3 million. But I heard that tonight. So I think the mayor has a long list. I saw her writing all night while people, so I think she's gonna cover a lot of things. So I'm just gonna be quiet. But I just want you, want everybody to know that we have to make tough decisions up here. And that shooting range may not even be a decision that even gonna come before us. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. So to echo some of the things that Commissioner Johnson just mentioned this afternoon in preparation for the town, for the workshop, knowing that some of those conversations were gonna come up inevitably, I did some research on my own, spent a few hours just trying to find a single example of a ricochet doing harm outside of the facility. The CDC has numbers on gun-related accidental deaths. There's about 400 in the entire country on an annual basis. They attribute about five of those to firing range accidents. That is firing range accidents. That is public ones and private ones. That is not limited to, there's no data on municipal-run firing ranges strictly for law enforcement. In fact, the CDC article went on to say that those numbers are effectively zero, because everybody is somewhat trained, even they've even been through at least basic, basic training or whatever the equivalent is for the Police Department, before they can start being an active law enforcement officer. They have training with those at their own facilities. So the numbers, the data's challenging to find any support for it being a safety issue. I understand in conversation, and you know, when you start talking about ranges of these ammunitions and how far they can travel, worry can set in. However, like I said, I searched for over two hours today and could not find a single one. So any of you that claim, I know one of you said that there's numerous amounts, my emails online, and I would encourage you to please send those to me. Would love to look into that, because as I stated, the CDC has data on it, and it doesn't reflect that. On another note, congratulations to Captain Kyle Jones on his 20 years of service with the Fire Department. I'm sure the citizens of Fairview are grateful for his service, as this board is as well, myself included. And then good luck to you, Tom, on your City Manager Summit coming up next week. Sure you're gonna squeeze it for everything, it's got, look forward to hearing about it. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank all the employees for everything they do, day in and day out. And I know, I know the hard job that they have. Next thing is that I wanna briefly focus on the cloverleaf and the median up at the 96-100 interchange. We have received an email from the state to go ahead with replacement of dead trees and stuff up there, and possibly the pruning back of some of the existing shrubs and stuff that's up there. But I did want to make that public that we have finally gotten permission to proceed with that, and Tom will be taking care of the necessary things that the state is requiring at this point. Other than that, that's all I have tonight. Everyone, have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Congrats to Captain Jones, and thank you for his service. I, just a reminder, I'll be absent. I'll be out of town for the Town Hall for the 29th, and tomorrow night is our last home football game. Just a reminder there. That is all I have tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I was a part of the Land Trust. I helped write it, so I know what it says back and forth. And the out parcel has never, ever been a part of the Land Trust that is on the Bowie Nature Park. So I just wanted to put that out there. When we discussed it, it was Bowie Nature Park. It was not this property, it was not the property out parcel. It was just on the nature park, so that we could make sure that it wasn't sold and it was protected. So that's one thing. The other is, I don't know where the figure of $3 million came from. That's totally incorrect. I can't think of the word, but it's $500,000, right? That's already been set aside for this, right, Tom? Allocated. Thank you.
That's in this year's budget.
Yes. So the $500,000 has already been allocated. This isn't money that we're having to try to find. So I, a long time ago, when I first, when I became 21 and decided to get a handgun carry permit, I went to the shooting range in the middle of Franklin and got my permit. I found out very quickly that without, I own a business, I wanted to try to be safe and protect myself. So I started training on a range that's out in Hickman County. It became very apparent to me quickly that I needed to get a lot of training myself. If I support our officers and this Police Department wholeheartedly, they work hard for us every day, and God forbid, anything happened in our community, especially like the one that chief brought up about that school where officers stood down and there were many children slaughtered, I would want our officers completely trained to handle a situation like that. You know, we talk about other training facilities that they can go to. Royal Range is shutting down. Dixon is not something that we can count on all the time. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the new facility that's being built in Franklin is not for, if I'm wrong, somebody can correct me, but the research I've done, it is not for shooting. It's a training facility for other things besides shooting. So I just, I just want our officers to have the best training that they can, and when we have new officers come in, I want them to be able to train immediately. So if we do have a situation out here, they're ready. And you know, I, these guys know, we have the best police force around. These guys know how much I appreciate them and support them, and they love this community. Each and every one of them love this community, and they want to take care of us, and they want to be as well-trained as possible. I want to congratulate Captain Kyle Jones on his 20 years of service. That is awesome, being somewhere, the same place for 20 years and caring about this community like he does. Charlie Hoffman, Micah Phan, for graduating the Police Academy. You couldn't be with a better group of police officers. I love you guys, and you know that. And they're blessed to be a part of our police force here. Coda Palooza, as Mr. Brungger said, he was here every night. I was here every night. And the people who are here each night got to take part in that. Thank you so much, Ethan. I've got to say, someone said to me when I brought up, we have an exceptional staff right now. I've not, I've been involved some way over the past 20 years, and I've never seen a staff as caring about our community and willing to work overtime, extra time, anytime, to take care of y'all, ever. And that includes everyone, including Mr. Carter. They're always there for me when I call, when there's a situation. There's not one time that they don't answer the phone, or at least get back to me very quickly. So people, I've had people say to me before, well, that's what they get paid for. I'm telling you right now, they work way more than what they get paid for, 'cause I see it. I'm fortunate, I'm able, with the business I own and my children help me run it, to be able to be free, to see what goes on on a day-to-day basis. My kids are grown, I'm not married, so I have a lot of time on my hands to be able to go to meetings and just make sure that I'm doing the best for this community. And I watch these people, and they give 110% to this community. So I thank them for that. I want to thank our Fire Marshal, Sean Sullivan, for coming out to our second Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning coffee that we had at the Fairview Liquors down the road, and to Dawn Norman for putting that on this, this past week. Sean Sullivan taught us about how to use a fire extinguisher. I thought I knew how to do that. There's a fire extinguisher in my shop next door and had no idea the steps. So I, you know, it's really cool that Patty Carroll, our Economic Development Officer, puts these coffees on for anyone who wants to attend, and a lot of the businesses attend those and get to network, but she always has a speaker. And this past coffee, Sean came out and told us, taught us how to use a fire extinguisher, and several, several of our citizens got to take part in that. So I appreciate that, and they're well-attended. It's the second Wednesday, different businesses, it's on Facebook, 8:30 in the morning. Like Vice Mayor Butler said, we have our last home game. It's hard to believe. If anyone can come out and enjoy that and support our team, it's our last home football game at the high school here tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. And just remember, for the 19th, the trunk-or-treat. We, we had the trunk-or-treat last year, and then the movie in the park, and I think we had 300 to 400 people there. It was a great event. Also, they're still, the officers are still raising money for Shop With A Cop. They, you know, sell food at each one of these events to get as much money as they can to be able to help the children of our community who might not have a, you know, Christmas. So I appreciate them doing that. Thank you to the board, staff. Thank you for the community who came out, the ones watching at home. I tried to clear up some of the sign ordinance stuff, so I hope that, that helped. And y'all just have a really good week, and just help keep Fairview beautiful by picking up trash and not throwing it out. I entertain a motion to adjourn.